Good evening and welcome to the work session business meeting of October 7th, 2021. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The treasures report for July 2021 is available in the business office. I'd like to open it up for public comment on any of the listed agenda items. No, no comments? Okay, then we're going to start with the consent agenda.
Sorry. Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through eight as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second, questions or comments? Mrs. Blino, do you want to tell us what's on the consent agenda?
Yes, the consent agenda tonight included a minute approval for the September meetings, approval of CSE placements, a change in, oh, excuse me, middle school and high school student activity treasures for the 21-22 school year, an appointment of an additional Title IX officer, Mr. Mello, approve additional work for various staff members, approve some amendments to 2021-22 clubs advisory and leadership roles, and approval of an updated 21-22 substitute listing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Now we're going into presentations, so we're going to start with Dr. Podesta.
So welcome, Dr. Podesta, up to the mic. She'll have several of her teachers join her this evening, each coming up and presenting a little piece of it, and I do want to recognize that our incoming assistant principal, Ms. Pico, is also here for the presentation, so welcome.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. I'm Margaret Podesta, principal of Putnam Valley Elementary School, and I'm here with some of my colleagues tonight to talk about the opening of school at Putnam Valley this year, with all that we have to celebrate and the fact that we are just getting started on our road to further success for our students. We are working with the theme that our whole district is embracing under Dr. Luff's leadership this year, reflecting, learning, and thriving. And so this presentation follows those themes, and we certainly have a lot to reflect on as we embrace this 21-22 school year. As we reflect, this is where our celebration begins. We have had an amazing year this past year, even through the most trying times. Our elementary school opened last year on September 8th, full-time for all students. We had a bit of an abbreviated day for our students so that our teachers had a prep at the end of the day to help their remote learners. Families had a choice to send their children to school full-time last year with all safety regulations in place, or to keep them as remote learners. Our teachers did amazing things, teaching children both in the classroom and at home at the same time. None of us had been trained to do that, and now we have become experts. This past year, our students continue to thrive, and we've been able to reflect on what worked and what worked for our teachers as well. Remote learners joined our live classrooms throughout the entire year. We learned so much about how to use laptops, Google Slides, weekly packets, materials, and even virtual field trips and assemblies throughout the year. Our teachers worked hard to prepare packets ahead of time so their remote learners were engaged in learning each and every day with a full schedule of learning. Throughout the year, we worked very hard, management-wise, to keep children safe, socially distant, learning and participating in activities and cohorts, all while welcoming all of them into the building. Our lunches last year were in classrooms, our specials were in classrooms, and somehow a virtual musical took place, band lessons took place, and children took part in all of their specials. We reflected on how to manage breakfast in the building, safe lunches, and ongoing learning throughout the year. At the end of the year, you may remember, we had in-person moving up ceremonies for our fourth graders. We had a very active field day with a surprise bubble bus at the end, and our children got the full-year experience. We kind of set the standard for those districts around us, how to do it, and we're reflecting on our successes as we move forward. We definitely looked at the healthy and safe environment for our students and, of course, for our staff. The virtual assemblies with the help of the PTA took place throughout the year. We had virtual parent conferences last year, and this year we're happy to report that our parents have the option of coming in person to the conferences. We maintained our social distancing, we had seating charts in every room, and last year we had, as I've already said, safe lunches and breakfasts so that the students were eating when we were learning a little bit more about COVID at the time. We kept our classes in cohorts at recess to help with contact tracing, and last year support services were kept in cohorts as well. As we reflect on what happened, we understood that we were being extra cautious, following all regulations, and learning more about the virus as we moved into this year. On top of that, all while those challenges were taking place, our children continued to learn and surprise us with how much they could do, even under these circumstances. If we look at this data, I can just show you, this is not the achievement, this is not the state test exam data, but this is what we use, the iReady data, as far as diagnostic results. What we have at the top here, and this is for reading, for grades two, three, and four in our building, second, third, and fourth graders take iReady in the fall, and then they take it again in the winter and spring, but where we are from the fall to the spring, when the iReady consultant came to meet with administrators in the summer, she was blown away. She said, "The change in these students from where they were to where they went in the spring is remarkable even for a non-pandemic year." When you think about the challenges our students and teachers were facing, the children in the green, who just as a diagnostic, were reaching 34%, 51%, 39% on grade level, then going up to 63% of the population, 74 in one class, 67 by the spring, and then to have even the yellow so high, with that red below grade level shrinking by the end of the year to such small numbers, we are so impressed with not only what we're offering our students, but how our students are showing us what they are ready to do. Math is just as striking, if not more so. If you see the green, yellow, and red, the green is showing where they were diagnostically at the beginning of the year, as far as being on grade level, moving up to where they progressed later in the year. This is because of the work of the teachers. Some of these students were at home much of the year, came back in and out throughout the year, and as the consultant said to all of us at our summer meeting, "What are you doing?" That's what she asked us, "What are you doing?" What did we learn, and how are our students doing now? Well, here they are, ready for picture day in kindergarten, wearing their masks, ready for their school day, and we are constantly looking together as professionals, what have we learned and where can we go? We learned so much last year, some of it we weren't even trying to learn. We've learned so much about technology, we've learned management creativity with specials and outdoor PE, breakfast, lunch, how do we handle AIS, band, and clubs. We learned so much that communication counts between home and school, between administrators across buildings, and of course, with our staff. We learned, as if we didn't know it already, that our PVES staff cares so much. If anything, they were frustrated because they didn't have all of the students in front of them, and if they left the screen, they were worried about the kids on the screen. If they went to the screen, they were worried about the kids in the classroom. And so what we tried to do is say, "You need to be kind to yourself, you're doing such amazing work," but really, we care so much. And we also learned that we live and work in a very positive community. Our teachers are working with our parents so closely, our parents understand that these are challenging times for all of us, but we continue to do the best work we can do and to set our standards high. What did we learn that matters most? That these children are incredible, they make us smile every day, we can set high goals for them, and they can set high goals for themselves, and they continue to amaze us, and of course, that our staff is there for our children every single day and in many ways. Now, this enrollment is hard to see, and I apologize, but I can tell you that last year, we had 522 students, not all of them in the building, but elementary students in our K through 4 classes, and we now have 528. So, very similar. We had five sections of kindergarten, and now we have five sections of kindergarten again. Last year, we had five first grades, and we continue to have five first grades. Our small group went from second grade, we only had four sections with about 16 to 20 in each, and now that group is in third grade, it's just one of our smaller cohorts in our district. And our fourth grade, our third grade is now, we were able to take those five sections of third grade and put them into four sections of fourth grade this year. And then last year, we had, of course, our large group of fourth graders onto the middle school already. So the numbers, if you can see now, we currently have 102 kindergartners, 118 first graders, we have 124 second graders, we only have 78 third graders, but we have 105 fourth graders. So it's an interesting enrollment, and our classes are doing well. Some of them are a little larger than we've had in the past, but nothing too high, especially in the lower grades. Last spring, we saw in our data, as we closely looked at our student achievement, that due to possibly the pandemic and children coming out of school halfway through kindergarten, we were looking at some first-grade reading data that concerned us. As I shared with my principal colleagues across the area, this was not uncommon. Some children at certain ages were possibly more affected by the lack of schooling, of course, and the interruption. So, we worked together, and Ms. Mastretta worked closely with me as well with this in the spring, for a first-grade reading academy where our first-grade teachers took that extra prep time at the end and for about six different days invited children who were just on the cusp of reaching the next reading level toward the end of first grade, and brought them in small groups after the school day. If you remember, last year, we were very careful with social distancing, and we were not doing our typical guided reading and our small group work because we wanted everyone to be spaced out. So we did that, and we saw growth, and we saw how effective guided reading teaching is, but we also saw that we were, as a community in our school, tending to the needs of our students based on data that we were seeing. So this was an example of creative solutions based on what the students were showing us. I've already talked with Ms. Levine, who said, "Margaret, would you like to do this again at some point this year, after we examine the data?" And of course, that would be wonderful, to be able to do that again. I'm going to ask Ms. Scolpini to come up here because she was a teacher who actually was able to help in our summer boost weeks this year. We were able to offer extra boosts in the summer, one week for students exiting grades two, three, and four, and another week for students exiting grades K and 1. Ms. Scolpini is a fourth-grade teacher in our building, and I thank you for coming up here.
Hi, everybody. My name is Erin Scolpini, and I did the summer boost, as Dr. Podesta just said. I was working with the students who would be moving into fifth grade. It was a lot of fun, very successful. The thing I liked most about it was being able to have the students working and learning without the academic pressures that you feel during the typical school year. And it was also really nice because we had a few students in the class who were remote all year. So this was kind of like their introduction to being back in the school setting come September, so that was really nice. We did a lot of fun activities, but stuck in some learning as well. I'll just explain one of the projects we did. So we talked about inventions and why people invent different things to solve some type of problem that you have. So throughout the whole week, students worked with a partner to plan and design, and then they actually made a model out of clay, or some kids even brought in materials from their home to make a model of the invention that they made, that they thought of. So like, for example, one group did a toothbrush attached to a hairbrush so you can save time and do both at the same time in the morning. It's very creative, I would buy it. And then at the end, they made like a commercial to pitch their ideas to each other. That was really fun. Some more academic things that we did, we did Math Jeopardy, so gamifying learning. We read a book called The Twits, which is by Ral Dul, short little chapter book, perfect for four days of school. And we had a STEM day, so I brought in a whole bunch of different activities, and I thankfully had a TA with me, so he ran two centers, I ran two centers, and they had a lot of fun. So it was a great week of learning, and I think the kids enjoyed it, and it went really well. Thank you.
So as you can see, Ms. Scolpini is a very creative, caring teacher, and it was wonderful that she was available to help these students transition back into the school year. We also had kinder camp again, we weren't able to have it last year, but this year we brought in 22 students who were ready to get used to their new building and what kindergarten felt like, and we had Ms. Demay as a teacher and Mrs. Verdi, and they just did an outstanding job. And every day, those little kindergartners would walk out, you know, balancing their big painted projects at the end of the day, just so proud, and "When is school starting? When is school starting?" So it really does work. We also had, of course, ESY managed by, of course, Dr. Doherty, and the ENL program, which was wonderful this year for ENL learners, which Mr. Hogan will tell you about, but, you know, just a wonderfully rich summer in the elementary school. And speaking of that, I'm going to invite up our ENL teacher in the elementary school, Mr. Jonathan Hogan, who's only been with us a few years, but he's making such an impact on our building, and he's going to share a little bit as English as a New Language in our building.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Hogan, I'm lucky to be here after serving so many years, I say "serving," but I'm happy in the city, now I get to work here in Putnam Valley, and it's been fantastic these past three years. I wanted to give you guys just a quick glimpse into what ENL, or English as a New Language, looks like here in Putnam Valley. This year, in the elementary school alone, we have 37 children across five grades, and there's lots of new entering and emerging students in kindergarten, so ENL is sort of tiered on five levels, and entering and emerging are the two lowest levels. So we have lots of new arrivals to the district, state, and the country, and we're doing a great job working together with them in kindergarten. Over the last three years, we've seen about 37 to 40 students per year, and that number seems to just keep going up. Only seven or eight years ago, there were less than half that number of students in the entire district from K to 12, so those numbers seem to be continuing to grow. And the levels do vary from class to class, I think it's great what we do here as a district. You see the students testing out early, not being long-term in the program for seven or eight or nine years, which can be common, but I think that speaks to what we do as a school district here. So just a couple of helpful terms that I thought might help everybody, these might be new to some people, but English as a New Language is often called ENL, and you often hear Ls or MLLs, as they're now called. Multi-language learners or English-language learners is just one of the buzz keys that we use in English as a New Language. And then I am also TESL certified, so I went to school to, you know, help speakers of other languages that are new to the district or, you know, just a little bit below native fluency. We work through all the levels with them. And for anybody interested, there's a link down there at the bottom that can clue you into many more terms associated with this. So this, I have an article that is attached to this as well, that if you guys are really interested in reading more about where a lot of this data and science comes from, I can send that to anybody. But I also wanted to talk about some of the myths that we find, because we do have lots of students at our school that may speak more than one language at home, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're an English-language learner as outlined by the parameters of the state. So they may still be learning English, but they may speak and read and write with a level of competency that is on peer with their monolingual peers, so they wouldn't necessarily be labeled an L by the state of New York. And one of the things we work on specifically is BICs and CALP. And as you can see, it takes about one to two years generally for children to learn the basic interpersonal communication skills. A lot of that, they will really pick up on their own, just through conversations with other friends in class, teachers, going into the library, or the auditorium, or even the cafeteria. But what really we're working on, and this is what we do well in our school, is helping that academic language grow. And as you can see, it takes several more years to catch a child up to grade level. You can imagine it can be exacerbated in the middle or high school because you have students coming in from new countries that could already be technically 10 or 12 years behind, where some of their monolingual peers would be, just in terms of their speaking and reading and writing abilities. So we work very hard to sort of bridge that cap in a myriad of ways. And this is just kind of a really quick, at-a-glance cheat sheet, you can see that there's really five levels, and where we focus most of our time, and usually this is in the lower grades, where we see most of the entering and emerging students coming from, we're getting, they're getting at least 72 minutes a day of mandated state instruction. Some of that would be in the classroom with me pushing in to support the classroom teacher, and also, those students also get a pull-out period, so they're also working with me for at least 30 to 40 minutes a day, and we're working on basic language skills and all kinds of cultural-related items to just coming into the country and the district. Again, this is just a little bit more in-depth of what some of the students would be producing at the entering stage, you're really just listening quite a bit. We call it the silent period, the first five or six months, which can be frustrating, especially for the children, but the teacher and the peers as well, because they really want to communicate, but they're just not there yet. So we talk about giving them that time to be able to listen before they're actually starting to produce writing and speech. And you can see the levels slowly go up until we get to what we call commanding, and then that would be something where we still provide services for an additional two years, but these students and children are now on level with their monolingual peers. You can see up there where all of our Ls are from, it's pretty fascinating to me that we have students from all over the world represented just in the elementary school. We have a heavy presence from Ecuador, and we also have lots of students from Mexico, Peru, Dominican Republic, Albania, and the middle school and high school, there's many students from, you can see Bulgaria, Hungary, Vietnam, they're coming from all over the world, so we must be doing something right here in Putnam Valley. To tie in with the theme, just as a closing, thinking about what we did last year, this is one of my favorite things about being in Putnam Valley, is that so many adults are actively involved in teaching every single child. And what we saw when we reflected at the end of last year was COVID was very difficult for all of us, social and emotional learning, we focused a lot on that, especially with some of the kids that might have had difficulty accessing technology, communicating with parents, or from parent to teacher was sometimes made difficult, whether it's a language barrier or a technology barrier, we worked pretty hard to overcome as many of those goals as we can. And one of the things that we learned from that was that the number-one thing that we're doing is consistently showing up for these kids. And I think all of the meetings I went to at Bosse's and with contact still in the city and other parts of the state, they didn't have kids in school all the time like we did. So the fact, or even if they had a few, they pushed maybe for special ed children and ENL, but we had all of them all the time, so that really helped us a lot. We learned that keeping them around and giving them that education every day is fantastic. So like Ms. Scolpini mentioned, having the summer camps, I did a week of ENL summer camp myself, and I think the kids had quite a good time. We didn't make any hairbrushes or anything like that, but we did get to read some books and learn a lot about the culture. And looking forward, I think what's going to really help us thrive as a district is the flexibility. If we have the opportunity to work with teachers and collaboratively plan, it helps make the transition for those children that might be new to the country to catch up to their monolingual peers in either the language or the culture, or just the grade-level texts and mathematics that they're working on. We're also thinking about moving towards more of a community-based model in the future of offering parent classes either after school or on the weekends, because the more that you can get the ENL population involved, the more they're going to participate in everything that's going on in the district. And that's a benefit for not just us as teachers, but also them as students and as they make friends. And I look forward to being here for a lot longer so we can continue to do this together. Thank you.
Ms. Podesta, are we allowed to put for Ms. Hogan on the spot and ask one quick question? I'm sorry.
He can answer in fluent Spanish if you'd like.
No, no, well, I won't understand it, you certainly can't. You mentioned that most of the emerging and entering students are our kindergarten first graders, and I'll be, I'll try not to use an acronym and I'll sell it out. Do we have a large population of what's referred to as the students with interrupted formal education, students that are coming in at a later CIF, students that are coming in later, they may be chronologically fifth graders, but they've only been to school a year formal?
So, right now, it's hard to say yes or no to that, and I'm not trying to be evasive, but it really changes from year to year. It depends on where people want to land, too. I can tell you that among the ENL population that is recently new to the district, the word is spreading that we're doing a really great job here, so people are, and I mean, of course, it's not just me, it's all the staff that we work with, but like, we're working very well together to sort of bridge those gaps. So it's, I don't see it every day at the elementary school level, because you have to technically be two years behind, and that can't even really happen until third grade, so that would be perhaps a better question for the middle school and high school ENL teachers. That's one of the great things, too, though, is we do get to communicate quite often. So is the number of CIF students right now great in the elementary school? No, we don't have a particularly high number. But again, those numbers can change from year to year, and that's really the difficult thing, that's why we like the flexibility to be able to, sometimes you may have a bigger concentration of kids that are entering, so it's very helpful to have somebody that can work with that small group as a pull-out. And another year, you may have a lot of kids that are higher functioning, and they just specifically need help reading, maybe learning strategies to tackle new vocabulary, or specifically writing, that's usually the last facet of language that tends to develop because it's productive. So the CIF kids would have the most difficult time with that, but we do have programs in place and testing available to help that when we can, but again, right now, not too many at the elementary school.
All right, that's great, thank you very much.
My turn, sorry, I have a quick question. One more. You shouldn't have been, you shouldn't have been so engaging, we would not have had one.
You're stuck up there now.
Well done, thank you. You talked about getting community involvement in the future, can you tell us how you involve family now?
Absolutely. I think one thing that's great is being able to speak fluent Spanish. I have a lot of parents text me on a daily basis, like, "What was that email that just got sent out?" And we're doing everything bilingually now, but sometimes it just helps to have a voice explain it to them. I help a lot with doctor's appointments, getting kids together, if I can explain a little, like, I like the fact that when I work with a classroom, for kindergarten class, I work with Ms. Forliso this year, and there's three or four kids that are really, really new to English, they have maybe 10 or 15 words in their vocabulary at this point, but we do a really great job of incorporating those students into activities that are going on in the group, either small group in the classroom, or participating at recess, or just checking in at lunch, they appreciate that, being brought in. So when we extend that one step more to the family, having, we have like a potluck dinner every year, last year we couldn't because of COVID, but my first year here, we had one where we invite everybody from the middle school, the high school, and the elementary school, we all kind of come together and bring cultural dishes, and that's one really fun thing that gets us together. But by bringing, speaking to the parents, a lot of them tend to be concentrated So when we extend that one step more to the family, having, we have like a potluck dinner every year. Last year, we couldn't because of COVID, but my first year here, we had one where we invite everybody from the middle school, the high school, and the elementary school. We all kind of come together and bring cultural dishes, and that's one really fun thing that gets us together. But by bringing, speaking to the parents, a lot of them tend to be concentrated in certain areas, so I'll see the parents on the bus. And delivering computers to some of the families that needed technology last year, like, I got to do that, which was pretty rewarding. So when you show up at their house and you're dropping off the technology and talking to them, it's just like one more step of being pretty personal. They feel cared about, they feel like a member of the community. So that leads to just a lot of positivity being reciprocated by both sides. So if they ever need help with, you know, really anything, a CSE or an IEP meeting, a 504, I've been able to help the district a couple of times, too, with either emergencies or just if they needed help with something. So the, they feel comfortable speaking with us. And I think that goes a long way, because our school community is great, and I can't say enough how much I love it here. And seeing the parents from other school communities, or just parents among our school community, talk to each other, they really like what's going on. So they're, you know, telling as many people as they can, this is a great place to be. And the parents enjoy being here, from what I can understand. They like the education that their kids are getting very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, great. Thank you.
You learn very quickly.
So you can see why Mr. Hogan fits in so beautifully at our elementary school. He's always solution-based, ready to help and do what comes first for students, so we appreciate that. Okay, and now, another wonderful teacher is going to help with this presentation on the work being done with Writing Revolution. So Chrissy Phillips, come on up.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Oh, sorry. I'm Chrissy Phillips, very proud third-grade teacher at Putnam Valley, and a very proud parent of two Putnam Valley graduates. I'm, I was very excited when Margaret asked me to come tonight to talk with you about the Writing Revolution. This came to Putnam Valley, I think it was 2018, and there was this buzz around about a new writing program and, called Writing Revolution. And it was put out to our staff, was anyone interested in going to a training? And myself and some other colleagues jumped right on board for it. Not sure what it was. We have a very rich curriculum, reading and writing-based. It's a wonderful program that we put together. So I was a little curious about what this was about, and how it was going to help our ELA curriculum at the elementary school. And I remember sitting there and saying, "We need this, we need this." And the reason why I felt so passionate about the Writing Revolution when I first learned about it is because it is completely embedded into the curriculum. So the Writing Revolution is a sentence-based program, and it goes back to this idea that students need that basic concept of learning how to write a sentence. Judith Hodgman is the one who created this program. She was a superintendent at Greenberg Union Free School District, she was the director of Winward School, and she developed this sentence-based writing program, because she found that students were writing, and people were saying, "Oh, my goodness, this child is such a terrible writer. Oh, my goodness, this child really struggles with writing." And she said, "No, no, 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 this child is not a bad writer. This child has wonderful ideas. This child just has not developed their ability to write a sentence, to put those ideas down, because great ideas are built off of one sentence, which becomes two, which becomes three." So this Writing Revolution is a sentence-based writing program, starting at the very beginning. It's explicit instruction, and the thing that made me say, "Yay," is it's embedded right into your curriculum. Because as I said, across the board, and as a parent of two graduates, we have a very rich curriculum that is put forth here at Putnam Valley, in our Putnam Valley schools. So I, of course, was concerned, where do we fit this? Where do we do it? But that's the thing, you can do it across all grade levels. It is a K-12 program. It is sequenced, it is very much scaffolded, and you lay out this program for the students, because the same exact sentence-writing activity that you are able to do in the elementary school with our K-4 students, you can do that at the middle and high school level. And this is my favorite thing, because the content is what drives the rigor of the program. So you can use, one of the activities is called Sentences and Fragments. Students are taught to identify what is a complete thought, what is a sentence, what is a fragment, an incomplete thought. And then from there, they are, we work with activities to help these children develop a fragment into a sentence. When I say the content drives the rigor, we embed that into science, we can embed that into social studies, we can embed that into art, and music, and phys ed, we can embed it, we can embed it into math across the curriculum, so that children are having this opportunity to use their language, to write sentences, to complete thoughts, and reflect. They're able to study, they can review material. Many of the activities are designed to be what we call exit tickets, to help them reflect on what they've learned. And when you put it into a sentence-writing activity, you're getting, you're checking off so many boxes. They're looking at their content, they're studying, they are reviewing, and they're writing a complete thought, they're writing a complete sentence. So really, I'm just so excited about it. So we started with this in 2018. We brought it into our elementary and middle school, and we're really coming back, and then COVID. So we're coming back to it now, and the district has really worked together with us teachers. So I'm called, I'm one of the turnkey instructors, and what we are doing is, the district is helping us to facilitate, where we're bringing it to all our colleagues, and we're developing lessons, and we're developing this curriculum, so that we can give it to our students, and it can then be a K-12 initiative that we can really work off of, and I really do believe in it, and I think it's going to do great things for our already great district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy, and thank you for being a turnkey leader for your grade level. We have one at every grade level in the elementary school. And of course, Jackie Levine has taken on this initiative as a leader in setting up the consultant work, so thank you, Jackie. All right, I am now, I'm not doing this alone, as you can see, Mrs. McCarty, first-grade teacher and parent in Putnam Valley, just wanted to say a few words. Because I asked her to.
I appreciate your honesty. My name is Kristen McCarty. I am a first-grade teacher in the elementary school. I am also a community member and a parent in the district. I have a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a three-and-a-half-year-old. So I'll have a one-year break before another one comes into the elementary school. I might retire before he comes barreling through. But anyway, yeah, so first grade, this is actually my first year in first grade. I have been in the district for 16 years, including substituting and leave replacements. And so I've been in the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school teaching. First grade might be my favorite so far. They're so little, and they're so excited to be in school. They're so excited to come running down the hallway every morning and to get to their classroom. I started something new that I saw on a teacher blog over the summer, where they get to choose their greeting with me every morning. And it's just, I'm in the hallway saying good morning to them, but they get to choose, do they say good morning to me? Do they just get a high five? Do they get a hug, or do they get a dance? And it's really fun when they ask for all four. So we're having a good time down in the first-grade wing every, every morning at nine o'clock. But they're excited, they're happy, they are also, like Margaret had said, that they're learning to be students again. I have first graders, so I have students that were remote last year, all of last year, in kindergarten, or were homeschooled. So I have students that have never been in school before. So that's been a challenge, but a happy challenge, because I am their first public school teacher, and that's kind of exciting, in some cases, unless they were remote. You know, they're so happy sometimes that they, they're learning how to work in groups again, because last year, even if they were in school, we were separated by six feet. So they are not necessarily used to working more closely together, not quite normal yet, but we're getting there, or at tables. So, you know, us first-grade teachers have, I think, actually, across the building, we've had to pull back a little bit, and kind of go back to the drawing board about having to reteach these kids, you know, how to be in a, in an almost-normal classroom. In, in math, we're plugging along with our Eureka program. We're learning to count on using images to add and subtract. In writing, Writing Revolution has, is off to a really great start in first grade. It is honestly amazing to see the progress that even first graders have made so far using that, that program. In reading, they're learning how to, what a good reader looks like, they're learning Foundations, which is our phonics program. And it's really been so much fun to be in first grade. So I'm, it's off to a great year, almost normal, we're getting there, hopefully sooner than later. And that's it.
Mrs. McCarty was teaching special education, so this is her first year in gen ed in first grade, and her students are so lucky to be doing that dance with you in the hallways. Just very quickly, we have worked very hard already, just over the past month, establishing what quarantine instructional support looks like and feels like in our school. We knew we were not going to the fully remote plan, we do not have remote learners, but unfortunately, we do have students who do have to go on quarantine, you know, for up to eight or 10 days. That's hard, it's a hard phone call to make to a parent when they have to go to work and their kid is healthy, and yet, we do follow all regulations. So this is, this is still challenging. We have worked out that our elementary teachers are inviting all quarantine children to a live ELA and a live math meet every day. It may be a short meeting online, but at least the child has a window into the classroom for both math and reading/writing. They also have asynchronous assignments and times to check in with their teacher, parents can email the classroom teacher, and we keep these children going academically, even though it doesn't look like the fully remote schedule as it did last year. This is a lot of planning, it's a lot of collaboration, and it's a lot of professional thinking that we have done, along with our district, to see what would work and what would be really okay with parents as well, only because these students, they may be out, but unlike last year, they are coming right back, and we don't want them eight days behind when they return to the classroom. So we are still living in this, we understand this, we totally understand how hard this is on families, and, and we're all trying to stay healthy, too, and keep these children healthy. I can't say enough about the work our school nurse, Mrs. Hill, has done. This is not an easy role right now, to be a school nurse. Yesterday, it just happened to be a really rough day with contact tracing, and she's just amazing with how she handles that position, and how she talks to parents, and how she cares for children. Okay, we have something very special here. I have Ms. Wendy Lee and Ms. Sharon Lum, who are part of our Mandarin program that we work with in partnership with PNW Bosse's. This is an exciting year. You know we've had Mandarin lessons once a week in K, and then in one, but we also have it now in second grade, once a week. So Ms. Lum is in our school every single day of the week, and I'd like to invite Wendy and Sharon up, just to say hello and talk about the Mandarin program. Maybe just Sharon.
Sorry, you could get me. Okay. You're not. Ni hao.
Ni hao.
Ni hao. And ni hao mei, I think. Can someone tell me what it means?
Hello?
Hello, you got it. That wasn't that hard, right? All right. Ni hao, wo jiao, Sharon Lum. And can you guess what that means now? You guys, I think you all get As. You guys are so good. So my name is Sharon Lum, and I am so grateful to be here, on behalf of Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's, who are so thankful for the partnership to provide Mandarin instruction and support programs in the elementary school and middle school. It's such an exciting opportunity, and I have to tell you, I'm excited to come to work every single day. I think, as all the teachers are telling you, it's such a wonderful thing to see the students every single day. They learn so fast. I don't know if you can see from the pictures, they're attending, we're learning our song this year, just, you're going to see a short video in a little bit, and it's so exciting how quickly they got to learn. Now, learning Mandarin as a second language, there are so many benefits, I had to bring my little notes up, because I can't remember them all. So exciting. As a second language, you can speak to one-fifth of the world population. How crazy is that? I can meet one out of five people. And to be honest, as an English language learner, and I really enjoyed that discussion, I'm a complete new English language learner. And I wish that when I was younger, like your children's age, that I had English instruction, because I wouldn't have had all the ENL classes. And I speak the way I do today, after a lot of hard work. And I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be here in this community, because as I think it's so exciting, Dr. Podesta and the school board, your children are getting to learn to speak another language. And let me just see, let me see all of the great things that you could do. Chinese language uses both sides of the temporal lobes of the brain, because of the Mandarin tonal language, and also the character writing. So it activates the neural activity in the working, thinking, and spatial memory. So there's research study that show a correlation between the learning of Chinese and math skills. I didn't even know this. Which are also embedded in the writing, because it involves skills such as counting the strokes, grouping, ordering, because the stroke writing, there's a certain order to it, kind of like our alphabet writing also, right? Because when I had to write the ABCs, boy, let me tell you, it was kind of hard. My writing is not that great, but Chinese, you can do it. Ordering, identifying, and all of these are great skills. You have to know the similarities and differences, because there are so many characters. I think they were saying that scholars, to be a scholar, you need to know 20,000 characters. Thankfully, for daily communication, you only need about 800. Thank you. I'm not at the scholar level yet, but I know, excitingly, I've seen like YouTube videos of foreigners who speak way better than me in Mandarin skills. So there's so much growth, and I think it's just so amazing what our children are doing. We've only been in school 20 days. Dr. Podesta, I need you to come up and show this video of what the students are doing. So excited.
These kindergartners have really been in school for 20 days.
Wo jiao, Hogan. Zai jin, zai jin, zai jin. Ni hao, ni hao, jiao zhong, zhong li. Zai jin, zai jin, zai jin.
Thank you so much, and I thank our classroom teachers in K-1 and 2, who welcome Ms. Lum into their classroom every single week, once a week for 30 minutes. And the children, when they see her, they say, "Ni hao." They start, they go home, and the parents were telling us at back-to-school night that, "Oh, yes, I'm learning Mandarin at home now." So it's really amazing. Okay, now, very quickly, you know that we have a very strong program of academic and related support services. This includes reading and math AIS programs for children whose data shows us and whose classroom teachers suggest that maybe they might need some extra support. We have speech teachers, we have counseling groups, occupational therapy, physical therapy, many levels of special education services, and together, we meet in our quarterly data meetings to really stay on top of where these students are, how they're doing, how they're responding to certain interventions decided through our RTI teams, and designing interventions and supports that meets their needs. This slide was made by Mr. Wish, our new math AIS teacher, and he said, "The only place where people can buy 64 watermelons and no one wonders why." The story of our life in math, right? But we are lucky to have such a strong math AIS program. It was taught previously by Mr. Coleman, and Mr. Coleman helped us see how we can bring students in, even for a little while, strengthen their skills, and then they may not need that extra support during the I block. Of course, when they go to AIS, we are not taking them away from new instruction in the classroom, and that's part of our well-designed master schedule that we work on every year with a group of teachers. Our Eureka Math Program is a very, very strong program, based completely on New York's Our Eureka Math Program is a very, very strong program based completely on New York State Learning Standards. We had outstanding professional development in Eureka several years ago. As Mrs. McCarty will say, I think she said it in our pre-meeting here, "I'm understanding math better than I ever did because we, our children are learning number sense and problem-solving on very, very deep levels." So we are very happy with how our students are doing, and our data shows they're responding beautifully to this. So students are identified for AIS based on their performance on the New York State Next Generation Mathematics Standards in their grade level. It's measured through a variety of formative and summative assessments, using, we use iReady, we use Eureka Math Module Assessments, and of course, we use teacher observation. Additionally, the classroom teacher may identify and present a student of concern to the RTI team, which is response to intervention, who's struggling to make progress. So we have a Tuesday RTI team for certain grade levels and a Friday RTI team. We work very well with scheduling appointments through our psychologists, who help schedule children's appointments based on teacher referrals. We look at interventions, we study data closely, and we talk about students emotionally and behaviorally as well. This might get them into reading AIS, math AIS, maybe a counseling group, or maybe just some interventions, of course, in the classroom. So what, using again the Reflect, Learn, and Thrive mode here, students begin each session with a spiraled review of previously learned topics. They learn, students re-explore concepts covered currently in their classrooms, and then gain additional practice and interventions in a smaller-size group. And to thrive, students are encouraged and expected to follow the eight standards for mathematical practice. So Mr. Wish was nice enough to, he couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted you to know, you know, how deep and rich this program is. We, of course, have the same for reading AIS. We also pay very close attention to social-emotional lessons and wellness in our building. This is both for students, and we hope it's there for staff. We have a clinical team support site for staff where they can access supports. They know the counselors and psychologists in the building, and of course, they can, we know, we can, they can reach out at the district level if needed. Laura Kilduff is our counselor in the building. She is going into each and every classroom on a regular basis to teach the Second Step Program, which focuses on behaviors, academic goals, smart choices, anti-bullying, respect, kindness, peer pressure, health and safety. And because we have this, we've also had Cove Care in our building. We know that our students know that the value of social and emotional wellness is a very, very high priority. And we know that in the world we live in and what we've all been through, this will remain important to all our students, and we will pay a very close attention to it. We happen to have a very strong clinical team at the elementary school. We get to know our students well. We talk about them regularly in a very supportive way, and we get to know their families as well, too. We, of course, for safety, also have a building emergency response team, also known as the crisis team, and sometimes it involves personal matters, and sometimes it involves other safety issues. But it's, we take all of this extremely, extremely seriously. Our PVES clubs are back. Here we have some safety patrollers in fourth grade. Last year, because we did not have children moving around the building in an extra way, we weren't able to have this, but now we do. They're wearing their belts and helping guide children to dismissal safely. The Kids of Character Club will be back. The PVES Musical hopes to be in person, of course, this year orchestrated by Mrs. Calhoun and Mrs. Phillips. We have the Young Explorers Club for the spring for our young students, the Garden Club, the Maker Club, and of course, the Gym Show, which we've put off to the spring to see if things will even be a little healthier and safer in the world. And the Science Maker Fair, of course, is always in the spring. We are so happy that parents have been back in the building. We had three open house nights, or I should say, back-to-school nights already this year. This picture is the famous kindergarten bus run day. All those parents have tears behind their sunglasses because the children are getting on buses for the first time for our little bus run and kindergarten orientation. We have PTA class parents this year. We are offering in-person or virtual parent-teacher conferences for November. It is the parents' choice, and we are so happy that we can have parents back safely just following all regulations in our building. Of course, one of the pillars of our school is our Character Education and Diversity Committee. Our theme this year is kindness. We need kindness in our world, kindness in our school. We're filling the snippet jars with kind words and kind compliments, and the Character Ed Committee works very hard to work on everything from respect, anti-bullying, safe choices. And we always have a theme each year, and this is the book this year by Diane Alber. We have a new special this year. You may remember that we had technology as a special with gym, art, and music. And now this year, instead of technology, we've kind of combined that into a brand-new, very exciting special called Innovation Lab, being taught by Mrs. Bruno. It works on problem-solving, teamwork, communication, and everything from technology, STEM, digital literacy, and what we knew as the Makerspace. So if you picture the library in the elementary school, half of it now looks like this as the Innovation Lab, and the other half has shelves of books that the children will be able to take out and borrow. Just to go through the grade levels quickly, kindergarten, they worked on with this book, The Most Magnificent Thing, and they created their own Most Magnificent Thing, hands-on learning, design, engineering, and problem-solving. First graders design and build back scratchers to help Big Smelly Bear solve his problem based on the story Big Smelly Bear. Second-grade innovators rise to the challenge and get creative with paper chains. And these are just some examples that have already happened this year. Can you create something with a cup of Legos? No problem. So as you can see, if you remember the concept of Makerspace, you are often given a challenge, very limited materials to work with. You might have restraints such as weight of your project or length of your project, materials you're allowed to use, and this is all intertwined into the Innovation Lab. Third graders focusing on collaborating and problem-solving to build the tallest structure with constraints, but of course, they had to work collaboratively to plan. And fourth grade, Iggy Peck Architect loves to build with whatever he can get his hands on. Fourth graders build their tallest structure using only index cards. Wow, they are impressive. And just looking at the different concepts going into STEM with technology, science, engineering, mathematics, and of course, art in there, too. This is a picture of our brand-new science lab. Of course, we had our capital project, and this is the beautiful science lab that we have. Ms. Bros, our TA in the science room, has worked with all grade levels to set up the schedule where students can visit the science lab. She's also helping arrange the Science 21 Lessons and Materials with the teachers, working collaborative with all of them. This is a beautiful room. This year, students are able to move space to space in the school, and that's exciting in itself. But to have this room where this innovative learning can happen and really focusing on the subject of science is wonderful. Something new this year that we built into our master schedule with our teachers, you can see some grocery store shopping here and some cooking. Every day, at the end of the day, kindergarten has a discovery hour, which is play that is structured in groups with different materials coming out each day. Children need to play. They learn through play. They're socializing. Some of them didn't see much of other children in the past couple of years, and so this part of the day is something we're very, very proud of, that of course builds on literacy and mathematics skills, along with socialization and just learning how to play and get along with each other. So as you can see, PVES is in full swing. This was one of our first days with our staff working together on planning and curriculum. But we've had all our kindergarten screening complete, mostly in the spring, but finished it up in the fall for children who hadn't been there. Our RTI meetings have been running a couple of weeks already. Our AIS and support services began immediately when the school year started. Our parent-teacher conferences, as I said, in-person or virtual is the option for parents, are already being scheduled for November. We've had at least four or five fire drills already, and today we had the Putnam Valley Volunteer Fire Department on our campus giving safety lessons to all classes. Thank you to that. We had Picture Day already with retakes in October. A book fair is scheduled. Our Building Steering Committee is set involving a nice number of parents and teachers that will take place throughout the school year, and the Halloween Parade is scheduled for staff and students on October 29th. The PTA hosted the picnic, one of the first Fridays of the school year, and the famous bubble bus was there, so that was a great time, and the skies cleared for a beautiful evening. Wonderful to see children having fun with their parents and friends outside in the fresh air. And by the way, I have Jen Pico here. We soon have a new assistant principal in the building. I've missed having an assistant principal, I will say that, but every day, we do a little lottery. The second-grade teacher said, "You want to raffle off the parking spot for the AP every day?" So every day, I pick a name out of a big hat, and somebody new gets the treasured parking spot. So we have probably about 19 more days of this, right, Jen? And then it's all yours. Looking ahead, we continue to want to be thriving and be the very best school we can be. It's a wonderful place to work, and I could not be more proud of our staff, our students, and the years that I've had here so far. Our main goal, of course, right now is to stay safe, healthy, and in school. Growing socially, emotionally, and academically all year with high achievement goals for all. Fostering an educational foundation for learning and inquiry. And when we have our K-12 discussions, I want to tell you, I take that responsibility very seriously. The foundation matters. Supporting a collaborative culture of support and community, and just being the very best school we can be each and every day. Putnam Valley School will reflect, we will learn, and we will thrive. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone who helped me present tonight.
I just want to say thank you to the, a lot of community members probably don't realize that the elementary school was open last year for all the students that were able to attend in person, and your staff and all the administration did a wonderful job with that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about anything?
No, but I could never work in an elementary school. I would spend my whole time saying, "Oh, my God, they're so cute."
They really are. You know what they think I'm there for? Dr. Podesta, is it tacos today?
The menu announcement in the morning?
Yeah, I get to announce the lunch, yeah.
Very funny.
I do want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Podesta and the teachers that came here to speak this evening. And I do want to recognize that for all we achieved at the elementary school last year, it came with a great deal of sacrifice and dedication on behalf of not just our teachers, but all staff at the elementary school and across the buildings. And our goal this year, really culminating with that ability to thrive moving forward, I think is really important, but I do want to take the time to recognize all of the sacrifices that took place to get to this point, to be able to thrive moving forward. So thank you all, and I'm looking forward to a very productive year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we're going to talk about our Board of Ed goals and district goals.
So this is pretty quick, I think I can do it right from here. As many are aware, we've shared the theme for the year, being Reflect, Learn, and Thrive. And I think we heard from our elementary school colleagues what that means for us. This is just a little more in-depth, looking at what our goals are for the year. So I'll just quickly read it. We want to reflect on our struggles and identify the small victories we experience, capitalize on lessons learned, and replicate to improve our practices. Acknowledge the past, but focus on thriving in the present. And I think we've heard a lot about really what our goal is, is to set our goals, where we want to be. We want to move out of this pandemic. We want to return to normalcy, and we want to really thrive and push our students moving forward. Some of the goals that fall underneath that work, and these goals are a culmination of work of our administrative team as well as our board members. On the instructional side, we want to create and encourage innovative, engaging learning opportunities that develop lifelong learners and produce diverse global citizens through collaborative, student-centered, and data conversations and instruction. Community as a goal of ours. Promote parent and community engagement to build trust through transparent communication and community partnership. Resources. Provide students and staff the tools they need to thrive in a variety of learning environments and engage with the community. Social-emotional. Acknowledge and support the social-emotional well-being by understanding the varying levels of crisis, need, and support. And finally, collaboration. Renew our team efforts to focus on inspiring students and staff to reach their potential through cultivating positive, safe, and dynamic environments where all stakeholders, most importantly, students thrive. So these goals will come up before the Board with a resolution to adopt them as our sort of guiding goals for this school year.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay. Next, we're going to talk about the NISMA Convention Resolutions. So though, though, there are, what, 25 resolutions, most of which Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association as well as NISBA agree to support. There are a couple that were, the group, Westchester-Putnam, was divided as to whether to support or not support. And I can answer questions if you have any questions about any of the resolutions or why there were, there was debate. Like number five says, NISBA support, NISBA should support proposals that would generate new state revenues with the dedicated purpose of funding education. It's not that Westchester-Putnam School Boards did not feel that we would like to have new state revenues, but there was concern over what monies would be used, especially monies, cannabis monies, and whether they, that they wanted schools associated with that. So there was a lot of discussion. So I'd like to know how this group feels so that when I vote, I can vote what we think. So do we support, you know, NISBA encouraging the state to generate new revenues specifically for education? You know, my, my concern is when this came up years ago with the lottery money, and they finally dedicated the lottery money to education, they then took away the money they were giving us because they're giving you this money instead. So it wasn't more money, it was just different money. And, you know, I can, I can vote pretty much, you know, what you think we should do about that. Should we, are we supporting, are you in support of that or not?
This feels so open-ended in what it's saying. It's literally one sentence. I don't know that it's a matter of, I mean, was, was the discussion really about cannabis money?
Yes.
I mean, in many ways, it seems a little silly. I mean, because if you're, it's, you know, state taxes on alcohol and cigarettes, et cetera, et cetera, we're talking about sin taxes. Is that where the, kind of the idea is? I don't know that, I think that, that horse is out of the barn as far as where revenues come from to the state in many ways. And there's, now, I understand the issue of, they might back out other monies, but I don't know that they wouldn't do that anyway without us supporting it. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of in line with NISBA as opposed to with WestPutnam.
Okay.
It's just my take.
And I would agree. Right now, we're in the money in education with the COVID and the savings. You know, there have been more money available, but we don't know. We can have another 2008 crash, we can have another issue. Exploring alternate funding sources is never, I think, a bad thing, and it becomes in all school boards to advocate that. It doesn't mean instead. It doesn't mean instead of, it means in addition to and in case we really need it down the line. So I would vote yes. I think it never hurts to explore new mechanisms, anything that ultimately helps the taxpayer.
Okay.
I kind of agree with what Janine said. I guess the word that grabs me here is the dedicated purpose of funding. Because you want to see the variety.
Well, they wanted to be sure that that was steady and sustainable. They didn't want a one-shot, you know, something that would only apply for one year, but they wanted something that was ongoing.
Okay. Yeah, any way we could help generate new state revenue.
Okay.
It's also kind of generic in, it's supporting proposals. It's not even specific. So I, I don't see, in my mind, I'm gonna see a danger of, I don't see that we shouldn't support it.
The other one where there was some discussion was number nine, where NISBA supports legislation to amend the open meetings law, to provide enhanced opportunities for a public body to conduct a business meeting using remote technology, authorize committees of a public body to meet through video conferencing without a fixed location for the meeting, and eliminate the requirement to disclose the location of members attending remotely and that the public can attend at those remote locations. So I guess the issue is, much of the discussion was around if a board member was attending remotely and had to disclose that location, the way the law is now, the public could go to that remote location and attend the board meeting with the board member. Whether, I mean, if they were in Aruba, it might be challenging. But, but if they were at home in their home in Putnam Valley, or at Panera's, or something else, that could present some problems. So...
And this is a response to, because that requirement was waived during the previous 18 months. For obvious reasons. Then, so, that's expiring.
Correct.
And, so what was the discussion of not wanting to?
Not wanting to disclose your private location.
Well, I think, and that and the, some districts are talking about doing video conferencing and, and not live board meetings. Some of the districts in Westchester-Putnam are thinking about that. There were other districts like ours that have, you know, as soon as we could have meetings in public, we started meeting again in public. So, it's not, you know, like, I think that we would support this, but there are some districts that are still trying to find what, you know, that are working on ways to use technology for board meetings.
So is this question, like, when we were during COVID and we had a remote board meeting, we were fully remote. The public couldn't attend, the schools were closed, we were fully remote. Is, the question is, if we say have a board meeting and one person is quarantined at home that wants to attend, they would attend in the video conferencing, but by disclosing that location and having them be part of it, technically you're opening my home and say, as a public location. So that's the question. When the meeting's going to be in person, but it gives people the chance to be a voting member video.
Correct.
Or if everything's locked down for another reason, whether, rather than canceling a meeting, you might decide to go with a remote meeting. If we have the legal authority to do that, then that would be like kind of another reason to have a fully remote meeting.
Right.
But the rationale by NISBA was that you wouldn't have to disclose where that, where that location was?
Correct.
And you're saying that West Putnam had a different take?
Some of them.
And what was that rationale?
Not on that part, but on the part of the, the video conferencing technology that was allowed during the pandemic. Some districts would like to go back to that. And so this, this, they would not support the legislation.
Because this isn't enough.
Right. But we've always felt that it was important to have the public at our meetings, and when we could, we, they were, you know, we had them here without using video conferencing.
I mean, I'm, you know, the genie's out of the bottle. So I'm inclined to support this, also because from a parent perspective, sometimes we look out into the audience and there's empty seats, but there, we see that there are people watching. So we have moved to a video conferencing situation. I think allowing as many people to participate, even if it's a board member who wouldn't be able to otherwise, and maybe with the caveat, as long as there is a quorum in person. You know, I'm inclined to, to support changing that open meeting rule, as long as generally you're having an open meeting.
I agree, I'm inclined to support it.
Number 15 was it to support legislation to establish guidelines for school districts for identifying and capturing data and creating metrics for initiatives that mitigate the damaging effects associated with climate change so as to more effectively communicate expectations and monitor outcomes when planning and implementing school budgets. They really want criteria that is regularly measurable, reported, and monitored, is basically what, what they're asking for. To help with planning budgeting. If you're deciding to take the long view and something may be slightly more expensive upfront, but in the long view, it helps in terms of climate change and there will be savings in the future, but they'd like some guidelines. So, it's just, they're asking the state to give us some guidelines based on criteria that's regularly measurable and reported. I think that sounds like a reasonable, yeah.
Asking the state for guidelines is always an exciting adventure.
Yeah, it's always exciting.
Yeah, I don't see how, you know, if they're just guidelines, we don't have to operate on them.
Right. And the last page, which are the proposed resolutions that are not recommended for adoption. West Putnam agreed with all but two. Number 19, NISBA does not recommend that they seek legislative or policy changes to streamline the teacher certification process from teachers from out of state and those with previous teaching experience. And their rationale, I think, is really that the system that we have now seems to be working. The committee believes the current process for certifying out-of-state teachers is adequate and ensures New York State maintains high standards for its educators. Meanwhile, the committee also noted that the process currently exists to allow districts to hire teachers as they're still completing the appropriate teaching certification. So I guess some districts are having trouble hiring teachers, and they're looking for at teachers from out of state who are not certified.
New York State's budget.
Right. But NISBA does not recommend that they, that we adopt that.
But West Putnam did.
West Putnam did, did not agree. There were, because there are districts, I guess, more down county that really would like to use teachers from out of state, and right now they can't. I mean, or the process takes longer. Do we have that a problem for us? Is it?
Well, it's not currently a problem, but in the future it possibly can be if there's a shortage, correct? Dr. Love?
I mean, we're definitely starting to see shortages of teachers in certain tenure areas, Spanish, E&amp;L, math. So there are definitely some certification areas that are becoming extremely difficult to find staff. We still get 600 applicants for an elementary school teaching position, but we may get six for a Spanish teacher.
Yeah, and we're not asking for teachers who are not certified. We're just saying out-of-state teachers. It's New York being a little snobby that our teachers are better and you have to do it our way.
Right. Well, there's that.
And this is essentially saying, we still want you to be New York State certified, but we're going to give you more time to actually teach. The curriculum is still the New York State curriculum and the New York State standard. So I'm inclined to support it. You're not saying we're waiving and anybody can teach indefinitely.
Right.
But you're just allowing us to have a process rather than the lengthy process it is now.
Right.
So Dr. Love, what is, what is the lengthy process now from somebody in Connecticut or Alabama to come to Putnam Valley or New York to teach?
I mean, off the top of my head, I can't speak to the exact details of the process, but I know this is a conversation that's happened over the last several years, is finding a way to make it easier for certified teachers from out of state to earn their New York State certification without sort of going through the entire certification process like someone who is maybe graduating from a graduate. Like, a lot of it comes to taking the tests, test scores, completing the test. I think that's really the largest barrier between themselves and becoming a New York State certified teacher.
And there are, there are certain states that New York offers reciprocity to, so that it does make it easier. But I don't have the list in front of me, but certainly we do offer certain states reciprocity in order to make that.
Because their standards are similar.
Are similar.
Are similar to others.
Geographic.
And geographic.
Okay.
Regional.
So?
I would support it.
Say again?
I would support it.
She would support it rather than go with NISBA.
I mean, we're still asking for a process.
Right.
So, you know, there would have to be what that process would be.
Right.
It still ultimately is our decision.
They're looking for policy changes to streamline that process.
Yep.
Not to eliminate the process.
Yep.
Okay. And then the last on 24, NISBA should encourage laws, regulations, and policies that promote alternatives for school districts when purchasing non-instructional services that do not give BOSEs an unfair competitive advantage. Artsley has proposed this twice.
Yep.
Was turned down last year. They brought it back. They, they are having a particular issue with, I guess, their BOSEs.
Their BOSEs, yeah.
Where they could get things a lot cheaper to not use BOSEs, but...
So what, last year's vote, do you recall how close it was?
It was not close.
No?
So, I, it wasn't close.
And how did we vote last year? Do you recall?
I'm sorry?
Do you recall how we voted last year?
No.
Well, the whole, NISBA voted no.
Yeah.
Right.
Denied Artsley's proposal.
Right.
And I think that the, kind of the rationale is the idea of, kind of opening up...
Quality control?
Yeah, and opening up the idea that, I don't know if it's a matter of wanting to make sure that BOSEs stays whole in certain, in many ways.
But BOSEs is supposed to be, it's not supposed to be competitive necessarily, it's supposed to be cooperative. I mean, that should be the goal. I mean, what, Jill?
Don't ask my opinion.
Jill, I was about to ask your opinion. Funny that you should ask that.
Ironically. Do you have an opinion?
I sure do.
Let me guess.
No, yeah, I mean, it's not going to be popular because it's, it's probably, you know, to vote that we should allow this because we should make it as competitive as we possibly can because it helps districts save money. So that's the goal, if you can get the same service for, for me, I mean, in my position, that would be my opinion about it. I don't know what it does to BOSEs as far as, you know, maybe it makes them have to work harder at getting more competitive contracts. So I would say that it's something that I would promote.
And this is specifically non-instructional services?
Correct.
So whatever is not considered an instructional service, but like cleaning supplies or...
There's all kinds of services.
Technology.
They're not being specific about, I don't think, about what types of services?
Just non-instructional.
Just non-instructional.
But then would that include related services and those kinds of things?
Probably.
I mean, if it went down so bad as last time, I'd imagine it probably would today, but I don't, I don't see that anything that can lessen the financial blow on the community is something that we should be looking at.
It is something to be sure of.
Yeah.
I mean, and I can see, on the other hand, BOSEs may have overhead and costs, and they offer such great services to our students, we wouldn't want to do anything that ultimately undermines them. But on the other hand, maybe be more competitive yourselves in certain things, so...
I think the, one of the things that comes up, I don't know why, and just the ethics of this, where, you know, Artsley must have a specific issue. Right now, I don't know what that specific issue is, but, you know, I can envision a situation where you could have a kind of, a not healthy relationship, conflict of interest with an outside company rather than going through BOSEs, and that's kind of a controlled thing, just my cousin works for this, I can get that price for my cousin. Now, you know, that's something that shouldn't happen, don't know if it would happen, but I could see that could be one of the arguments for staying within the BOSEs ecosystem. Jill, you have any thoughts on that piece of it?
Well, collusion is against the rules, so we can't talk about that. No, I mean, I definitely know that there are situations that we are forced into because they offer certain services and we feel obligated to go through them. Or, I mean, the aid that we get back on it is, is a, is a good thing, but I think we ultimately pay more for services in some situations than we need to because they offer it. But I, so, I mean, they're not speaking specifically to certain types of services, so it's hard to say like what they're talking about. I had to guess.
And I think there was, there was something like this last year, a couple years ago, talking about being able to go to different BOSEs instead of your BOSEs. And that failed as well, I believe, too. Because you can get it somehow, you can get it cheaper from a different BOSEs in New York State than the one that you're actually in, which you can't do now unless they don't offer that service in your local BOSEs, which is why we could take something from Southern Westchester, which is not our BOSEs.
Jackie is a former BOSEs person. You have input?
I'm happy to share what input I can. I think when it comes to our particular BOSEs, Putnam Northern Westchester BOSEs, where I did work previously, their vision is service and innovation through partnership. And what you get from an organization like PNW BOSEs that you lose, perhaps going through an individual organization, may be a better price, but a lack of the customer service and the innovation of the partnership. So what a BOSEs tries to do, and is usually very successful, especially our own BOSEs, is they take the request from the district, what the district is looking to do, and they work with the partners, they identify the best possible partners, and they work with them to be most responsive to the needs. So what we may gain in a little bit of cost savings by the most competitive, we lose through the partnership and the innovation of the service. And that is just something to consider always in terms of customer service with a certain organization where just another number, with a BOSEs, where their district, where their partner, and they go to bat for us, for lack of a better term.
Thank you.
Good feedback, both of you.
So, now that we're totally confused, now that we can't decide.
Based on the conversation.
So just use my judgment, based on the conversation, and I'll report back. Okay. Fair or not?
You heard where we all stand.
Ah, okay. Got it.
So, before we go to our next presentation, I'm going to take this opportunity to make a quick plea out to... to make a quick plea out to the community. So I want to start by saying how much we value and welcome the community to these meetings, how much we like to hear from the community in terms of your comments. But in return for that, we expect or hope, regardless of personal opinions, that all community members will abide by the public health law that governs this meeting, which includes the wearing of masks while here. So at this time, I'm going to suggest that the board go into recess until we either reach compliance regarding masks or have, well, really, until we reach the compliance for masks as required for this meeting. So that's my recommendation at this time.
So I'd like a proposal, that resolution that we take a recess?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, we are taking a recess. Our student representatives.
So, before you guys begin, I do want to certainly welcome Dominic back, but I do want to welcome for the first time, Leanne Kaler is one of our three student representatives. So welcome very much to the board table.
Thank you. So the high school is offering a homecoming dance to all four grades on October 16th, the night after the homecoming football game from 7:11 to 7 o'clock to 11 o'clock. Tickets are $10, and the last day to buy your tickets are tomorrow. It's in the high school gym, there's food for sale, DJ, dance floor. It's going to be fun, and I think a lot of people are excited for it. Definitely after a pandemic. We also have color wars coming up, which is November 1st to the 5th, and there's different themed days that are already planned. A lot of us are proud to have it, and we cannot wait for everyone to participate. And also, we have our blood drive coming up on November 10th, sponsored by the National Honor Society, and that is from 9 o'clock to 3 o'clock.
And that's open to the public, Leanne, too?
I believe so, yes.
It almost sounds like a normal school year.
Almost.
Almost.
Almost. Trying to get there.
Little steps.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so my report is next. I do want to recognize that our high school held their financial aid and back-to-school nights. Both events were very well attended and received very favorable feedback from all involved. Our board held its annual retreat, and actually was continued again this evening, and we had two consultants come in and work with the Board of Education. And some of the topics we focused on include communication, policy and regulations, roles and responsibilities, as well as best practices. And again, I think everyone left with a great appreciation for the work and thanks to the consultants who helped bring us through that work. A quick COVID update, it has not been our best couple of weeks since the last board meeting. We've had one adult and 11 students test positive, and the result of those positives, those positives resulted in a total of 84 individuals being quarantined. Our weekly testing of staff, of unvaccinated staff, has not yet resulted in any or not resulted in any positive tests. We hope it never results in any positive tests, but I do want to provide an update regarding the weekly testing of unvaccinated staff. Each of our buildings held its flu shot clinic this week, and it's always great to see the number of individuals who come out and participate. I felt a little guilty escorting young kids to get their shots. It was an all hands-on-deck moment. Many of us in the district office participated and helped be runners for the young kids, but it was, there was actually some really cute moments. Kids who had strategies, what to do. One girl was singing a song when she got it, and I think she drew all the attention of everyone else away, so glad it's over, but it was nice to see, to be with the kids. I do want to provide a quick update. Prior to this meeting, we held our superintendent's listening hour. Approximately 20 individuals joined, and really it was an opportunity for our new director of curriculum instruction, Mrs. Levine, to run the show. She broke everyone up into small groups and had those small groups really answer three main questions. What do you want to see for your child? What do you want to see for our district? And what's sort of the one thing we can do better to get everyone there? Again, the feedback was extremely positive, and we're looking forward to offering more opportunities to engage our community in sort of informal dialogue, much less formal than a board meeting, on these important topics. We thank all those parents who came out in their busy lives to join us this evening. I'm going to give a quick little prelude to something that's coming out tomorrow. I want to begin, our, the district is already in works for putting together a program for First Responders Appreciation Day, which is October 28th. I want to begin by thanking the members of our Putnam Valley Fire Department, who visited the elementary school today, and students had an opportunity to come out, get a presentation, they learned about the trucks and the different equipment that our firefighters use to keep people safe. Some of the communication going out to the community tomorrow will focus on three opportunities, and we'll be inviting any and all first responders who live or work in Putnam Valley to join any and all of these activities. At Putnam Valley High School, we'll be honoring our first responders by inviting them to our homecoming football game. The first responders will lead the team down the driveway. They'll be on the field to be recognized prior to the game and for the national anthem, and really just an opportunity to thank all of the first responders living and working in Putnam Valley. At Putnam Valley Elementary School, we'll be inviting our first responders to a read aloud, so they'll have the opportunity to come to an elementary school classroom, where they'll read a book about their profession, be able to answer questions, and really share a little information about a day in the life of their profession. And at the middle school, we have first responder equipment and apparatus. We have a variety of first responders that'll be bringing vehicles and different equipment to our middle school parking lot. Middle school students will have an opportunity to go out and see demonstrations and tour some of that equipment. Our SRO, Rob, has been involved in helping arrange that and set that up and partnering with other organizations, and that's really going to be an exciting time. I'm sure it won't just be the middle school kids, there'll be plenty of adults out there checking it out as well. Obviously, our local fire department, the sheriff's department, and our ambulance corps will be front and center, but there'll actually be other opportunities for other agencies to join us as well, military, medical professionals, anyone who really is sort of on the front line. So a quick little... Thank you. A quick little prelude to information that'll be going out tomorrow, and I encourage anyone who's listening or watching and interested in participating, there'll be a quick little form, just give us your name and contact information, and we'll send more detailed information regarding whatever one of those events they wish to participate. Just a quick look ahead. This Friday is the state mandated early dismissal drill, so all buildings will be dismissing 15 minutes early. Monday is a holiday, schools will be closed. As quickly mentioned before, the 15th is our homecoming football game. It'll be senior night for our cheerleaders and our football players. And then other senior nights coming up. Field hockey was actually this evening. Girl swimming is on 10-1, or was on 10-1. Volleyball, 10-4. Boy soccer, 10-5. Field hockey was tonight, 10-7. Girl soccer, 10-12. And cross-country, 10-13. The middle school has its Red Ribbon Week scheduled for October 23rd through 29th. And that's it for my report. Thank you.
There's a lot happening. Okay, let's move into new business. So, resolution number one.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Carol Espinara to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant commencing October 1st, 2021, and terminating on September 30th, 2025, for the teaching assistant tenure area at the annual compensation of step three pro-rated of the CSEA salary schedule in accordance with previous CSD policy 9250. Ms. Espinara holds teaching assistant level one certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Rebecca Cassidy to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective October 12th, 2021, with a probationary period of 52 weeks, October 11th, 2022, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Ann Kelly, a middle school ENL Spanish teacher, from the district effective the close of business on October 28th, 2021, as per document number 75-22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Mary Calabro to a six-week long-term substitute in social studies teacher at the high school, effective October 4th, 2021 through November 30th, 2021 or sooner, at discretion of the Board of Education at the substitute salary rate $135 per day. Ms. Calabro holds social studies 7 through 12 initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Yvonne Maza to a temporary appointment of office assistant effective September 10th, 2021, at the high school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Resolution passes. Number six.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Desiree Turnewald to a probationary appointment as a school monitor effective October 25th, 2021, with a probationary period of 52 weeks, October 24th, 2022, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Lynn Keller to a temporary retroactive appointment as a senior office assistant effective July 1st, 2021, on step six, the CSEA senior office assistant salary schedule. The 26th probationary promotional appointment as a senior office assistant effective August 24th, 2021, to February 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the 2021-2022 Board of Education district goals as per document number 77/22 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? I'll be glad to see them on the website. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Okay, we are going to open it up for public comment on any topic. Please, when you come to the microphone, give us your name and address clearly so that we can note it in the minutes.
Hi, Krista Strobb. There was a situation at the high school today with the ambulance.
That's correct.
Okay, can you describe what it was? I heard it was a little scary that there were things put on the windows to, so the kids can't see out. Is that...
So no, I cannot comment about the medical issue. I can comment, there was nothing put on the windows. The classes only stayed in their classroom, instruction continued. There was no, it wasn't a lockdown or a lockout, just students were asked to stay out of the hallway, so...
This was in the gym, the windows?
Okay, I could just speak to, what happened today was a hold-in place, which is nothing more than kids continue to learn and stay out of the hallway so that our medical professionals can do what they need to do without having a hallway full of kids.
Okay. So there was no security? It was a medical accident?
Yeah, we sent, immediately we sent out a notification to the entire community notifying them that there was a medical incident that required an ambulance, but I certainly am not a, it's not my job, not my right to describe what the medical incident was or who it involved.
Yeah, no, no, of course. So at the last meeting, there was an auditor's report that has the last five years of revenues, and we received federal aid in 2021. Is that correct?
We receive aid every year, yeah.
You receive it every year?
Sure.
Wait, so we receive lots, aid in many different forms, federal and state aid, every year?
And it says zero here, 2017, 2018. This is from the auditor's slides from last meeting.
Okay.
Federal aid?
Is it the federal stimulus aid?
Are they, was it referring to the stimulus aid in particular, or, you know?
Well, that was my question. I did look through the footnotes. I'm a controller, so I can read that. I didn't see a breakdown of what that was. So I'm assuming it was the American Rescue Act, is that...
So I don't have the report in front of me with a description, nor was I at that meeting, but I will review it if you need some further explanation or have questions about it, and we can talk about it, or...
Well, did the district get money from the Rescue Act?
So none of the money has been received yet.
Okay.
There was an application process, and we applied for the monies that were allocated to the school district. We haven't received full, so we received notification that we were getting part of the money and that it was approved so far. None of it has been spent or used as of yet, because we had to wait for approval. We just received part of it, part of the approval this week, actually. There was an additional amount of the American Rescue Plan, the ARP money, if you're referring to that in particular, because there's two separate allocations for the district. That one has not been approved yet. We've applied for it, but they have not sent approval in yet.
Okay. There's terms to these grants, correct? That we...
You mean, yes, there's guidance and criteria that have to be met in order for them to approve the applications.
Some of it is spending, right? You've got to spend it on certain things, right?
Right.
There's some documentation here, it was August, and it has guidelines and terms and conditions. I'll just read it. It says that we would agree to comply with existing and/or future directives and guidance from the secretary regarding the control of the spread of COVID-19 in consultation and coordination with HHS. Provide, commensurate with the condition of the individual, patient care regardless of the individual's home jurisdiction and/or appropriate public health measures. Assist the United States government in the implementation and enforcement of federal orders related to quarantine and isolation. What I'm asking is, is this federal aid money tied to these conditions?
I'm sorry, what document are you reading from?
ELC reopening school support for screening, testing, to reopen and keep schools operating safely, updated guidance, August 2nd, 2021, supported through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
I'm going to make a suggestion that you just connect with Jill and with Jeremy directly.
Okay.
That way you can get exactly what you're looking for.
I understand that this federal aid line may be broken out into something completely different than what I'm looking at, but I had to ask. I had to ask the question.
Yeah, I mean, we receive hundreds of pages of state regulations and federal regulations, so if you want to send us what you're looking at, I'd be happy to look at it and answer.
Well, it's alarming because we got nothing for four years, and then in 2021, we got $150,000. So I guess my question is, are we getting more? And how much, I mean, our property tax line's $34 million. You know, and these... You know, and, and these, these conditions here are interfering with my, my rights as a parent. And I want to know if we signed up for that.
So you're suggesting that we decline the federal money?
A hundred and fifty thousand? Compared to the, how much does my, does my, my kid worth more than a hundred and fifty thousand?
So a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars was received in the, was allocated to the district in a prior year, but yeah, I can connect with you separately and go over those, that information. There were further allocations given to the district, but we haven't received any of those funds yet.
Okay.
As I explained earlier, but yeah, there's definitely guidelines and criteria that we would have to use to apply for that money, and I think if we have a conversation about that, maybe that would help clarify some of that.
And I'll scan, I can scan this to you, will you?
Oh, absolutely. That would be very helpful, yes.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patty Villanova, and I live in Putnam Valley. I had two, two matters I wanted to ask about tonight. Ms. Parmley, I believe you are the head of the Board of Education? Are you the?
Yes, I am the president of the board.
Does the Putnam Valley Board belong to the NSBA, the National School Boards Association?
We are members of the National School, of the New York State School Boards Association.
But not the National School Board Association. Are you a member of that? Is our district a member of that?
I, I don't.
The NSBA? I think you might be.
I don't think so.
Well, I, this letter came out from the NSBA that supposedly represents all of the public school districts in the country, and this letter has gotten a lot of press in the last couple of days where America's public schools are under an immediate threat from parents and, and stakeholders and taxpayers who come here and speak, as I do, who come and question what the board is doing. Are you, people, do you think that we're terrorists? Are we domestic terrorists, the people that come here? Do you feel threatened by us in some way? Because this, that's what this letter is. I mean, it's created quite a stir, and, you know, the NSBA believes that immediate assistance is required to protect our students and school board members, because people are coming here and complaining about critical race theory and other things. Does this board feel that way about us? Do you guys feel that we're some kind of a threat?
No, we have always invited the community to be a part of this process.
Okay.
But I will, but I know that there are communities where board members have been threatened by community members. It doesn't happen to be our community.
But this board doesn't feel threatened by, you don't feel that we're domestic terrorists or anything, the people that come here?
I think you're getting a nice, I think you're getting a nice soundbite out of that, but there's no traction on that.
Well, I'm good, yeah, I know, Putnam, the Putnam Valley School Board doesn't consider us to be domestic terrorists. That's, that's a good soundbite. So, well, that's good to know, and then this way, so when the FBI comes and when they check out my Facebook page and everything, I'm just going to tell them, you guys said I'm okay. And that's good to know. The other thing is, you know, this mask business, the last time I was here, I, I left documentation, I left page, two pages of links, and, you know, this is really, it's really getting a little bit ridiculous. I have grandkids that have to wear these masks, and it is really abusive of these children, and I really don't understand with all of the documentation, you have peer-reviewed, double-blind studies. You have studies from all over the world, all over the country, that prove that, first of all, the children are not big-getting and giving the COVID anyway, and that the harm that is done with the masks outweighs any good. These, it's been demonstrated in all of these studies. I mean, there's more here than I care to read, but documentation of the ineffectiveness of masking, I mean, this is coming from the Journal of Emerging Infectious Disease, Annals of Internal Medicine, Mask Mandates and Public Health Measures ineffective, randomized controlled trial, on and on and on, and I don't understand why this board is insisting. There are boards, there are school districts in New York State that are now suing, suing to get out of these mask mandates, and it's really, it's really terrible. I mean, the masks really have been proven not to do anything. They do more harm than good, the psychological damage that it does. Have you seen the videos? Have you seen some of these kids? I see some of my grandkids, and I can't believe the way they carry on. So why, why are you so insistent on this? Why not take, take a step and be brave like other districts and challenge it? There's a directive, it's not even a law, okay? What is coming from the State Education Department and from, it's still not a law, it can be fought, and you are supposed to be here representing, to protect, it's the child first and foremost. This is very bad for our children. I don't know why you have this, this, you know, there's more proof, any, anything that you can come up with, I mean, do you even, why are you, why are you so insistent on these masks? They, they, I mean, there is more evidence that they do nothing. I mean, can you even explain it besides, well, there's a, you say there's a mandate? I don't understand. Why? I mean, really, it does more harm than good. Can you give us, as, you know, give the public an explanation why that you have this, you know, you're, you're so demanding about the masks when there's so much evidence that they don't do anything and that they're actually bad? Can you explain why we have a mask mandate in this district? I'm asking, you're the Board of Ed, you're supposed to be representing us, not Dr. Jeremy Luft, okay? You are elected by us. You represent us, not him. So I'm asking you, you're the head of the board, please explain why everybody is so insistent on these kids being, they don't want to wear them, little kids don't like to wear them. Why are we doing this to our children if it doesn't do anything? I'm asking you for a simple explanation, because the scientists are saying this doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
But I could give you a list of scientists who say it does, and I'm, I'm on the side of sci, the scientists who believe that it's helpful.
And as many as you have, I have as many that are.
Okay, okay.
That does.
So it's a draw, but I've been at the school, and I've got teachers sitting here who, who say the children are happily coming to school and leaving their masks on. I see them in stores, they're happy with their parents, I see them in churches.
Please, come on.
I'm sorry, this is what I see.
Please.
You asked me why. I believe it is best for children and staff and their safety. That is why.
And said, even though, even though there are people that are actual, I mean, these are even connected with the Center for Disease Control, the National Institute of Health, you are not a scientist. You don't have a medical degree.
That is correct.
Okay?
That is correct.
You, but you're supposed to be, these children, you, this is fine. All of the damage that it does, do you know what it does, psychological damage to children to wear these masks?
No, I don't.
You don't?
No, I don't, no.
You don't believe it, or you don't know about it?
I don't believe it does.
You don't believe, based on your, your knowledge, based on what? Your research?
Based on.
Any research, why, when you have such a draconian mandate as this, when you are doing this, actual harm to children, I think you need more than just one person's opinion, and I think that you should be, do the right thing. I think this district, you should do whatever you have to do to get out of wearing these stupid masks, because they do nothing and they hurt the children.
Thank you.
And one more question, you said you're not scared of us, or you're not worried. Why is it necessary to have an armed guard at a, at a Board of Ed meeting if you're not worried? What are you, what is it? Because you want to make sure that my mask is covering my nose, have an armed guard, and you're not scared of us? Please.
I'd just like to know for record, we've had a sheriff at board meetings for the last five years, most of which were attended by zero community members, and yet we still had a sheriff, so he certainly had here for you or anyone else individually. They're here every year as part of their contract at the school district. Thank you.
Bye, Patty, see you.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries, we're happy to wait.
Take your time.
Watch the wires.
Hi, my name is Therese Dwyer. I'm a Putnam Valley resident. I used to serve on the board. I served on the board and was vice president for part of the time during the negotiations for the, the high school building, which I thought was the most contentious period I've ever seen, and I was wrong. This is a crisis.
Never say never.
I was escorted out under, under, with a police escort because they threatened to shoot us. Sorry, I'm not used to public speaking and I get nervous. First, I'd like to start off by offering my profound thanks to the superintendent, the administrative staff, the teaching and the non-teaching staff, the board, and the children for persevering through this very, very difficult period. I work for a small daycare center. We have fifty kids and eighteen employees, and I was pulling eighty-hour weeks for months to try to keep everything, you know, all the balls in the air, and I can't imagine what you guys have done. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts. A lot of times, you hear the loud, angry voices, and there's a whole herd of us that are unable to come to the board meetings or unwilling to come to the board meetings for one reason or another, but we really appreciate your work, and I'm sorry you don't hear more voices like that. And I hope you do. We really appreciate it, and you guys did a remarkable job. The presentation about the elementary school was amazing, and the work that they've done, the goal, the gains that the children made are clear evidence that what you're doing is working. Thank you for not going rogue and ignoring recommendations from the Department of Health. I'm vaccinated, almost everybody here is vaccinated in the school community. I have underlying conditions, and a breakthrough infection would be really serious. There are other people in this community, you have a cohort of children under twelve who are not vaccinated at all, and I commend you for standing up and following the instructions of the knowledgeable medical professionals that are giving you such good advice, and I am sorry that people don't agree. Little daycare center, we've got kids eighteen months to five, they wear masks all day long, they're absolutely happy, healthy, thriving, nobody complains. We get more complaints from the teachers than we get from the four-year-olds. So anecdotally, I can tell you that it isn't hurting anybody. They play actively, they learn, and again, thank you so much. And the other thing is, we've just got to calm down. Everyone has strongly held beliefs, but we need to be respectful, and some of what I've heard and seen is not respectful. This is not a good model for children. Your children at home know what your beliefs are. The character education that they get at home, the character education that they get at school is going to provide a basis for them to become productive adults, and that's a shared goal of both parents and the school, and we just have to work together and pull together to make them successful adults the way we became successful adults. Thank you very much, and thanks again for all your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Krista Straub, so there's eighty-four quarantines? Is that elementary school, middle school, high school?
District.
That's the whole district?
And it's not that they're all out right now, that's just the total number over the last two weeks.
Now, my kids are in high school, so the quarantines, they don't affect me as much as other mothers, but I was a working mother since my kids were little, and they're suffering, you know? They have to call in, they have to, their kids are healthy, they're sitting home healthy. If they get, why isn't testing part of the procedures? If a child gets exposed and they go get a test after the incubation period and it's negative, why can't they go back to school?
So, while I may personally agree with you.
Okay.
That's not the guidance we have.
That's great.
That's not the law right now. I mean, I'm as eager as anyone to get to the point where kids don't need to wear masks, where kids don't need to quarantine. I hope we are quickly approaching the point where this is no longer treated as a pandemic, it becomes an endemic, which is similar to the way we treat the flu. I am eager to get to the day when we could simply notify families that their children were exposed and ask them to monitor them and ask them to test them and, and just allow them to continue about their daily lives, just like we do for other viruses, and I hope that day is coming soon. But the day's not here, and we are obligated to follow public health law. We can sit up here and say, as much as we want, that it's our job to defy mask mandates. It's not. There's not a single public health employee sitting up here.
And you shouldn't be getting all this, this pressure, Dr. Luft, it's not your job.
The second, the public health experts recommend that children no longer need to wear masks, we'll follow suit.
Which public health experts, though? Is it Putnam County, Albany?
Whoever is informing the New York State Department of Health, who writes the public health law, which we are required to follow. Whoever they follow, seems like the CDC, but maybe they have other, I'm sure they have their own scientists, their own experts, New York State DOH writes the law that we're forced to follow. That's the reality. The Department of Health issues quarantine orders and sets the rules for students returning, not the school district. I don't quarantine kids, and I don't release kids from quarantine, all right? I provide the Department of Health a list of students that meet the criteria that they provide us. When they're released is up to the DOH. What they allow for, to release is up to the DOH. If they allow students to test back in, we will gladly accept students who test back in, but until that changes, it's not my job to defy public health law, and we must continue to do what we're doing until those laws change. We, Patty can sit here and yell at me about wearing masks, but she's yelling at the wrong person, all right? She wants to yell at the Department Commissioner of Health, who makes that decision, that's certainly her prerogative to do so, but it's not my job, it's not my role, and it's not my decision whether kids have to wear masks.
Okay, well, that's Patty, but I'm standing here, and I'm a parent, and I haven't seen the district, and maybe this is not you, Dr. Luft, maybe this is the board or whoever is responsible. I haven't seen any communications to the Putnam County Health or to Albany sticking up for our kids. You're supposed to stick up for our kids, it's your job.
So you have my word. I have a weekly call with the Department of Health every single Monday at three PM, and I advocate for our kids every single week.
Okay. Can you write something to them, and the board, the whole board signs off on it?
Saying what?
About the testing, what I just spoke about.
And, and I just at a public meeting said what I hope we get to.
I know, but I want to see the district tell Putnam County Health Department what they think they should do. Testing should be part of it. What, that's like a ludicrous.
I'm not a public health expert, and I don't tell the Department of Health what they should and shouldn't do. All I can do is explain the consequences it has on students, the detriment it is to our teachers, and where I hope we will quickly be as a school district, but again, I'm not a public health expert, and it's not my role to tell public expert, health experts what they should think and say.
Okay, well, what about our elected officials? Do you feel you have a responsibility? Parents are here talking about it. We've been here a lot. Like, don't you think you should, you know, send something to them saying this is what our parents are asking for, so that their kids can get an education? My daughter sat home ten days perfectly healthy because she was on a volleyball trip on a bus, and the Department of Health went and asked for the video to check to see if the girls had all their masks on the whole time. God forbid they should take their masks off, and they quarantined the whole bus.
So I'm just going to echo Dr. Luft. I'm not a public health expert, I'm an educator and a community member.
You're an elected official. You should be writing something to our public health officials, telling them what's happening. officials, telling them what's happening to our kids, what's happening to our communities. Mothers have to stay home, they can't work, you're ruining the American family unit.
I would disagree with your characterization. I'm just going to be very clear, I think if you want to write to the Department of Health-
I write all the time, sir.
Then that's fantastic, and I'm-
I want to see you write it.
That, that, you can want that all you want.
Right.
You can want that all you want, that doesn't mean one voice-
So you're saying one thing, and Dr. Luft is saying another, he wishes he could elect?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay.
I'm not saying something different at all. I wish this was all over, I wish this was over yesterday. But-
You know the rules are right.
Where it is right now is where it is right now, when we've got 84 quarantined, correct, over the last two weeks, which means we've got cases in our school buildings, right?
Obviously.
So, the, the idea that this is pastime, and we have, we have 1,000 students that have no vaccination to this disease, there is a risk. And I think, you know, again, not being a doctor, I would follow the guidance that, that we are given, because I believe it is sound based on what I write.
You don't believe testing should be part of-
I'm not saying that either, I would love-
But you're saying you agree with the guidelines. That's the guidelines. Testing isn't part of the guidelines.
It would be great if, if testing was in the guidelines.
It would be great, wouldn't it?
But they're not.
People could send it. But that's why I'm asking you, the people who represent us, right, to write a letter. Don't you think it should be part of it, so our kids can go to school? You don't want to write a letter.
Okay, any other public comments? I'm gonna close the public comment, oh-
No, we got someone else.
Brendan O'Brien, I have three kids now in the elementary school. Do they give you any guidelines that give you options that the kids can be here without masks? Is that one of their options?
It's not.
And then the-
Sorry, let me clarify that. There are, there are medical exceptions for students who are unable to wear masks due to health, health reasons. Mostly has to do, mostly we see with students with autism and other factors where they can't tactically handle the mask in their face. So I don't, it's not a blanket, no, we do have some, but it's very rare.
And the, there's two more, I mean, there's many questions, but just two things that stood out. And one little, one little thing that happened to me personally, to show that the masks do not have a, that, that they do have a negative effect on the kid's health, and especially with small brain development and stuff. Last year, I almost got rushed to the hospital for low oxygen, when they put the little pulse ox thing on my finger. I had a, a, just a, not this mask, because this one's even more restrictive, just a medical paper mask to throw away. And I had an SPO2 of 89 to 91. And the nurses and the doctors were frantic, and running around, they probably tried five or six different pulse oxes on me. I said, I'm just, just a stupid mechanic, but can I try one stupid little thing and take off the mask? And then when I took off the mask, in about 45 seconds, I was back up to 97 to 98. And then that was followed by them asking me if it was okay for them not to put that in my file. And for me, that was a personal experience that, that did have a very negative effect on me. And then the other question is, this is brought up by a couple other parents. Is it true that the district will not get federal funding if they do not use a certain percentage of CRT, SCL, and 1619 project? If they don't use some of that, a certain percentage of that federal funding that's being requested for, if it's not used towards, you know, certain percentage of that funding is not used towards those three things that I mentioned?
That is incorrect. We are no obligation to follow any of the things that you just outlined, in order to receive any funding.
Yeah, I, I don't know anything about it, it was just, just a question somebody wanted to ask that wasn't able to be answered. But that's it, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment period, and I'd like to talk, the board would like to talk about upcoming meeting topics and presentations.
So our next meeting is scheduled for October 21st. Similar to this evening, we'll hear opening of schools update for our middle school and high schools, as well as our science research sophomores will be here to present their topics and hopefully make some connections with mentors. November 18th, we have our athletics department update. Our new athletic director, David Kanchowitz, will be here to provide an update about athletics. And yet to be scheduled, we have a high school seal of civic readiness, and a New York's, well, the middle school bridge program, which has actually been tabled for right now anyway, so those are upcoming.
I'm waiting for that.
Jeremy, we had talked last year, I think Joe brought it up, regarding having a library presentation, is the name?
Say it again, sorry.
A library presentation? Do you have that?
I'm sure Mary, if I was possible.
Thank you.
And not that I'm looking for more work, but one of the things on the consent agenda, we approved Danny Turner and Christina Casey's TCIS training. Both of them, I've seen them present to the staff. I think their therapeutic crisis intervention for schools program is awesome. And I'd, and they're so enthusiastic, I'd love for them to present, you know, to this, to, you know, the board about how to reduce stress and teach kids coping skills, because I think they're, I think they're powerful, both of them. And I think it would be nice for the community to realize what we're doing for students. Anything students think we should be seeing presentations about or hearing about?
Nothing current at the moment.
But they will take it under advisement.
Dominate, it was a tease, you pulled the mic down, I thought you were gonna come up with one. Sorry, sorry. Hope you guys hear me clearly.
But if you, if you think of something that, like, it would be good for us to hear, or the public to hear about, a program that's going on, or something, like, let us know, we'll, you know, tap that person and see if they're willing. We'll blame it on you. No, just kidding.
Most definitely.
I think that's great.
I actually did meet with some students who talked about, you know, speakers or other experts that we could bring in to sort of, to help them sort of, you know, expand their own knowledge and things like that. So I have a list, and then we're gonna meet with a bunch of students, so maybe out of that, we can do some presentations here.
That'd be great.
Sure.
And I love that we had, you know, teachers other than the principals in, in terms of the presentations. I, you know, I will say that it just, it makes it that much closer to the children.
Next step would have children presenting what they did. Absolutely, that's what we should be doing.
I was gonna ask Chrissy if she could give me an example of a sentence in her writing.
I personally think-
Or Kristen to do her dance, but I didn't want to embarrass her, so I didn't ask.
I would love to see kids join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Huh?
For the Pledge of Allegiance at each meeting. I would love to see kids join us for that.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
And I would love for First Responders Day to acknowledge some of our high school students who participate on our local volunteer fire department, maybe-
And ambulance corps.
You know, certainly, I just have to give a shout out to Leanne, I'll embarrass her. I saw Leanne in action, and I've been working for the district for a long time, so I know Leanne since she's, before she started school. And she, we had an emergency, and she ended up responding as a first responder. And it was really incredible to watch her in action in a whole nother role. And today, at the, with the fireman here, you know, at the elementary school, another one of our former students who graduated two years ago, maybe, he, he ended up realizing that I was the one who he responded to when I was in my car accident on 301. And it's just really nice to see so many of our students involved in our local community, with the volunteer fire department, with the ambulance corps. So, so a big shout out to you guys.
Our own little first responders preview. Okay, board member, comments on any topic, anything?
I just want to commend the district for, as a working parent myself, having the fuchsia clinics in the various schools. But I, I have to say, I found myself saying, "A five-year-old didn't have their mommy when they got a needle?" Really, made, made me, you know, pause. So I'm assuming, and I know it was with-
I'm seriously considering outlawing kindergarten first-grade chats.
Yeah, no, I can't even-
The teacher's like, "Should I tell them where they're going?" And I'm like, "Uh, I don't think so."
But that may be something to think about.
One student was telling me, "I have a strategy I'm gonna use, use in first grade." And I was like, "Well, first of all, just the word 'strategy' in first grade, I'm kind of impressed with." And then he, then he started to show me as we were walking up the stairs, that, and it was closing his eyes. I was like, "No, no, not now. Let's not use that strategy." So, very cute, very cute.
Very cute.
But I, I commend, I am sure there were students sitting on the laps of teachers, TAs, secretaries, each other. So I really commend it.
I do, sorry that you brought it up. We had three nursing students who came and joined the representatives from the Department of Health. And I have to say, these three young ladies were kind and compassionate and caring and really, I mean, they were holding and hugging kids like they were their own. And it was just really impressive to see, and kids being able to quickly relate to them. So I thank them for being part of it and really being there to support our kids. It was nice to see. I'm sure all three of them are watching this meeting right now.
They will go find them and watch our board.
We'll tell them to look at the video.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'd like to motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.